Place a long time and we're finally doing it this week. So that's all I have for department updates. Real quick, we'll go ahead and launch into our meeting.
Okay. Okay, let's call the San Juan County Planning Commission meeting for May eighth, twenty twenty five to order. Commissioners and attendants. Melissa Rig and Austin Lloyd Wilson, Trent Schaefer and none online. Uh, staff Kristen Bushnell. Corey Coleman. Jen's Nelson. We have Commissioner Mon and Commissioner Stubbs in the audience. Oh, and Matt McDonald. Okay. Who would like to lead us into pledge allegiance?
It was Anne. It was definitely Anne.
I had a few lists. Hide more minutes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the freedom of our wishes stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um. It's one or the other. I, I think that we'll just hand that back to Kristen.
Oh, can we? I don't think we can do that though, because we don't have it in the new ordinance.
Okay.
Or we can bump it up real quick and.
I think we just.
Let's get the minutes done and then we'll.
Okay. Conflict of interest disclosure. Anybody have anything that they're in conflict with on this agenda? Hearing none. Um, minutes. Any additions, corrections to the minutes from April tenth? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
A move that we approved the minutes from April tenth.
Okay.
Second.
And a second. Although some favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's, let's do public comment and then we'll drop down and move legislative vote.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, this is time for public comment and this is for anything that's on the agenda or not on the agenda. I, I do want to address the public and state that we have. You know, there's, there's been questions of whether we get all the emails and I can guarantee you we get one hundred percent of all the emails. So because we haven't addressed them doesn't mean that we haven't read them. Because we as a body have not gotten together and said, what do you think of this email or that email? But, but we have received them all and we've read them all. So I just want the public to know that. Okay? Public comment.
Can I just ask a clarification?
Sure.
Did you say that this would be the time for public comment of anything on the agenda?
Or not on the agenda.
Or not on the agenda. So if something that you came for is on the agenda at the end, would we speak now or at the end?
If you're an applicant or presenter, you'll speak then.
But you're not an applicant. So if you have anything to s- so you would speak now if you have a comment.
And then be respectful to your three minutes.
Okay. Any online public comment?
Are there any comments online? You can raise your hand.
Okay.
Hi.
Hearing none. Okay, now you can.
Okay, I'd like to suggest that we move up item number five and address it now, just so Mr. Herman doesn't have to wait through the entire meetings.
Okay.
Yeah.
We would like to address that.
Are you, are you?
I'm the president of our association. My name is Anna Fever and I'm a president of the Deer Haven Park POA.
So are you representing Frank Herman?
No.
Okay, so it's only. So that would be public comment. Should we go back and hear a public comment, please?
So, so I have the, and you only need probably the page number one. This is our CCNRs. And I only brought. And, uh, two, so, uh, actually I have it both one. So there's one more.
Oh, I'll take it.
Thank you. So, um. It just came to our attention that, uh, Mrs. and Mrs. Herman are applying for a conditional use for their, uh, RV. And in Article Three. Section Two. It's right on the first page. It stays, it states over there that they have a, they have to finish the construction in eighteen months. From the time they get their permit and they can live in the RV during that, those eighteen months. And, uh, so, um, we asking that, uh, we have a, uh, the architectural committee review. And, uh, this should be addressed with the C, uh, our POA and, uh, an archi- architectural review committee. Not through zoning. And so, so we asking that you would refer that back to, so we can, uh, uh, deal with that.
It's, it's still got to go through the county.
The what?
Still got to go through the county.
Still has to go through the county?
And then whatever you do with your HOA is totally up to you, but.
Okay.
But, uh, we do have in our ordinance that it's a conditional use permit.
Okay.
And it's permissible by our ordinance.
But why would somebody ask for that when?
Cause they have to get county approval.
When there's an avenue through the CCNRs to get that.
If you grant it, we can still block it.
If we grant it, you can still block it. It, it goes both ways. So, so they, they apply for it here. They are granted it. If it does not match your CCNRs, it's civil. It goes to court between you and them. But as it stands within our ordinance, it's allowable with the conditional use. So we grant it every, and after that it's, it's between the other homeowners and them.
Okay.
What I'm hearing you say then, that if, if you grant them the use permit. The POA Deer Haven can stop it, can block it.
Absolutely.
They can't tell us that you've approved it, so it goes through.
No, no, because of this.
Okay.
That this is your standing in court. You take it to court.
Right.
You, you get a lawyer, you take them to court and say you're not following our covenants and that, I mean, it, it costs you money, but.
But I'm curious that, but it, it seems like we're, it's. It, it's, it's kind of repetitive that if, if we have it in place, that they have an avenue to do this. Then, you know, the time and money that the county has, I'm just curious why, you know, the county would even, why, why you wouldn't refer it just back to the POA instead of, of make a decision on it.
Because we still have a, a standard for the county ordinance.
Right.
That we follow. Cause this means nothing to us whatsoever.
Right.
This doesn't exist in our world.
Right.
So I want to just.
Our decisions are based off of our ordinance, not your county.
We can't get into discussion right now. This is three minutes public comment, but we can discuss it with you after.
But I want to put something on record.
Okay, you've got three minutes.
We put, we, we talked to Kristen and Kristen said that with the zoning and planning commission, said it to me and to her. That, that, that the zoning and planning commission would not in any way undermine the authority of the HOAs.
No, it said we cannot uphold any of the HOAs or CCNRs. That's, that's upheld from the HOA. That's not upheld the county.
But you could refer back to that governing body.
It, it's not in our documents.
This means nothing to us.
So we can talk about it after this meeting, but we can't get into discussion right now. Otherwise we're in a public, uh, like a community workshop and that's not what we're doing.
Can I ask a question though?
Sure.
I'm curious why this is even an issue.
Well, because.
It's allowed.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Well, what happens is, is that, you know, people are bypassing the covenant restrictions and going to the county for authority and then they're telling us that they got the county authority. And not walking through it with the POA.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay.
Okay, so let's bump number five up, it looks like.
Is, wait, is there any more public comment?
Okay, number five. Consideration and approval of a temporary conditional use application for a RV trailer extension during home build.
And I don't think it's Frank Herman here tonight.
About online?
I can all represent on his behalf. Um, we received a temporary conditional use application from Frank Herman to be located on this parcel in Old LaSalle. Um, it'd be temporarily used as a living quarter while building the house. Um, it will be temporarily set up and disassembled once the, uh, certificate of occupancy is granted. It is in an ag zone. North off of State Road forty-six. Um, this use is permitted as conditional in the A1 zone. Um, the conditional use is for six months and they can extend that for a period of three extensions for maximum twenty-four months total. If that breaches, uh, HOA's eighteen months, that would be a civil sue against this applicant. Um. So our, uh, considerations must protect any existing water well sources from contamination. Uh, must comply with Utah Division of Drinking Water requirements for any water storage tanks on the site during construction, must comply with all building code and permit requirements. Uh, must comply with county health department requirements and must comply with county business license requirements, which we could cross that one off here. Um.
Wait, will you go back up? We missed fire.
Would that be covered under building codes? Or do you want to add it on as a, a separate?
No, uh, fire is separate. So I think they fall within the Wildland Urban Interface Code in LaSalle.
Yes, and we've got some updates to do in our ordinance with that.
Well, you don't have to because you just follow the two thousand and six, um, Wildland Urban Interface Code.
So what would you, how would you like it to read, Lloyd?
Just that they have to meet all the requirements of, uh, more or less.
Um, so must comply with Wildland Urban Interface.
Fire code.
Fire regulations and codes. Okay, good catch. Like it.
Correctly with the fire chief.
Okay. Okay, we good on those. Let me show you. There's his application for it. Um, there's a summary. Pretty straightforward. Um, here's the location of the lot. So there's State Highway forty-six. Um, and then here's a site plan. So there's North Coyote Lane. And this is his plans. Um, this one does have an ADU on it.
So I have a question.
You can't ask questions right now, but.
But I can after, I can ask.
Yep, yeah. So as soon as we wrap up the meeting, you can talk.
So what's existing?
Uh, nothing. It's just an empty lot right now. There is a, I think there's the well houses in, he said something about that here. Um. So in June, which he got a building permit for, he's got the electric and well in already.
And the subject. Yep, yeah. Waste water disposal system, twenty-three.
So they're, they're, got their hookups installed and are ready to roll.
And this is his initial application?
Correct.
This isn't a re, an extension?
Correct.
I make a motion to approve the conditional use application with. You want me to read them?
With the conditions listed is probably fine.
With the conditions listed below, including the fire.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. To approve. The temporary conditional use permit for an RV trailer. Uh, owner Frank Herman. The other discussion?
I have a question. So they come to you for an extension, right? They don't have to come back to us.
Correct. It's just that they haven't abandoned the project. So as long as they are moving forward, but they need more time and our building inspector would know that because they've been marking inspections along the way. So that's what vests them to have that extension.
And the CCNR allows them eighteen months and, and we allow it twenty-four months? That's the only difference here? Of six months. They get an extra six months if the, the subdivision doesn't want to take it civil.
Right. Yep.
Are, are, are we allowed to comment at this point or no?
No.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Uh, although some favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we're jumping around just a little bit here, but we'll go back up to review and discussion of planning commission bylaws. Um, we wanted to revisit this. We have not been able to get it. It's just been a little hectic in our planning commission world and so, um, I'm hoping to take these bylaws once we get them kn- knelled down to county commission. Um, soon, shortly.
Will we see a draft after tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, and I could send, I could send that out and just make sure if we want to look at it again next month, since we only have four of you here tonight, we could do that. Um, so.
Do we not have a recommendation on it?
It's, it's in these minutes.
We talked about, we never.
We've done a lot of discussions on it, but we've never made a recommendation to move it forward to codify.
We do make the recommendation to the commissioners. Okay.
Yeah. Um, so just based on the March, uh, notes of last year, we had some clarification that the bylaws are to write structure procedures. Um, with the clause that they can be suspended at any time that we want to just rely directly on the state of Utah code. Um, the process for changing these has to go to county commission for codification. Um. There's a couple of things we wanted to change and I've highlighted them here. Um, the first one was the candidate qualifications. Um, this preferred, preferred qualifications. Um, we wanted to loosen that up, but I'm not sure where we make it any looser. So if anybody has any discussion on that first highlighted section.
That's the one we changed last time.
Yeah, that, that was kind of, that was an update. It was an improvement from what we had before, which.
Which had building or construction or development experience. So do we like this one? This one's okay?
I like it.
I'm fine. Yeah, I'm gonna be Cody here for a minute.
I was gonna say Cody's part.
Somebody's got to do it.
My Cody hat. So I don't know if it's in this section or in, um.
I looked through it and I could not find where it said builders, engineers, developers.
Yeah, no, it doesn't say that. But Cody had the point that he thinks the person should be from an, um.
Unincorporated.
Part. So is that a preferred qual-? So it's up above where you talk about how there is a. Yeah, so members, they shall, shall be from the following areas. Should we have a part maybe in here that there's a preference that the person be from, live in an unincorporated area? Well, it does say in areas where the county has jurisdiction. Which is unincorporated.
Well, it's, it's to guarantee balance where the county has jurisdiction.
Okay, it doesn't specifically.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to be a tough sell if we, if we restrict it like that because.
But what if it's just a preferred? That if somebody, it's a person.
If there's two running.
There are two running.
Run, one living in bluff and one from Mexican hat, that it would be preferred. Okay.
Yeah, I think we ought to say that, just to make it clear that, um, that is the preference.
That's our push.
Okay, so just something, I'll highlight it in red. Preference given to applicants living within unincorporated areas.
Yes.
Okay. Our next one here was, um, the cutoff deadline. Uh, I'll be honest, this Friday, this right here, the planning and zoning department, our conditional uses are three weeks out. And it says that on the conditional use application. And so we're, we have a little bit of a. It's two different deadlines in two places. This one is the Friday before planning commission meeting, but I tried to get it to legal one week before. So it would go to legal the Tuesday before the Friday that I'm hoping to send it out as always. And so I, I really need, I mean, we took, what was yours? Like three fifty PM on Friday? And so I'm, I have been taking stuff right like through the weekend and then trying to scramble to get it together Monday. And I think I need like a two week cutoff so that I can get it compiled. We can have legal have a week to look at it. And then we kick it out to you guys. So if we went two weeks before the planning commission date, that Thursday bef- like, we'll just go two weeks prior.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
And I would also like, uh, item, what was it? Chapter four, number five. I'd like us to get it by Friday at eleven fifty-nine PM because everyone here works. And so when we get it on a Tuesday night and we have a Thursday night meeting, that is not enough time to do an adequate job.
So instead of three days prior, let's say by.
The Friday before. Well, and something else to consider about when we get the agenda, is it legal? Can we as the planning commission get the agenda before it is published? So we can review it for just basic process. Cause more eyes on the agenda is better.
What if I?
Catch things like, oh, we should have had a public hearing.
How about I kick it out to you guys when I kick it out to legal?
Is that, is that okay?
That's fine.
As draft agenda.
Main thing is the final one has to be posted within the.
Yeah, but the, the problem with that, Anne, I like, I, I really like the idea, but then we're back to you read the whole packet. And then there are changes and so you have to look at the packet again. I mean, that's my issue.
The other thing I worry about is if there's a bunch of communication through email about starting to discuss items on the agenda.
Kind of we want to close that up. I guess the, the problem that I want to solve is that before the agenda is published twenty-four hours ahead, there's somebody looking at it, just double checking to make sure that.
And that's legal.
That we're getting things right when it comes to the twenty-four hour, meaning what's on the agenda is, is, um, action versus, you know, w- w- that we're in compliance with how it means. So that we don't end up like what happened with Lisbon Valley, right? They had to wait a whole nother month for their project.
Well, they get to wait a whole nother month.
Small mistake. Oh, what?
We'll talk about it.
But you know what?
So that would.
Problem I'm trying to solve. So I don't know what the, what the answer is, but that was just one.
I think I need a two week cutoff because I've been trying to help people.
I don't think we disagree with that.
And it's not going well.
I don't disagree with that. I think our question is when do we get it?
Do you, so do we want the draft to go to the planning commission, but the only thing said back to me so we don't get into discussions is we need this changed?
I'd, I'd rather have, I'd rather wait to have legal look at it and give it the thumbs up before.
And then we just send it that Friday before.
And that's fine. You know, maybe I'm making a mountain of my own application. I felt like maybe when it's so last minute, at the twenty-four hour mark, you know? Oh, yeah. And then, you know, simple mistakes can be made and then it's too late to, to update the documents. So anyway, I'm fine as long as we get enough time to review.
Okay, um, so we're going to change that to the, we'll just designate the Friday before. Um, there were some, speaking of like communications, that's down here. Um, Melissa, I know you and I think it was Anne had some like clarifications or maybe some adjust, adjustments of what. Kind of can we clarify some boundaries of what's permitted in communications between staff and commissioners?
Yeah, so the problem we had with this, I think was number, um, chapter five, number five, whatever. Um, so those are two, those are two, there are two separate points being made there. The first point is that we can talk to each other. We can talk to you. We can talk to other departments. That is different from maintaining public impartiality. Public impartiality is the second half of that. We have the ethical duty to avoid making public statements. So I think this first part, how we can seek information from other co- commission members, et cetera, that needs to be its own item. And it's, you know, it's.
So then that starting each member of the commission has an ethical duty would be the maintain.
Right. And I don't know what you would label that first part, but it needs its own. It's like, you know, um. Intra-commission, intra-county communication or something like that.
And I think we might even want to add to that, that we can discuss information, but we cannot discuss how to vote between people. Is that correct, Jen's?
It is. But we do glasses on that. The idea is that your true decisions are made in the public.
Open meeting.
If everything's decided beforehand, then that kind of defeats the purpose.
What would be a decent title for that? You want to think on it?
Just split those up.
Yeah. So that basically that first sentence plus, you know, the ability to, to gather information, but not discuss um, how they're going to vote.
So why would, why would we separate that again? Cause I mean, you read the, the.
Maintain.
Maintain public impartiality.
So are my talking to.
Can do, but the things you can't do, it's all within the same.
No, well, I read it as my talking to, to you about, hey, Lloyd, give me some history on this. Isn't maintaining public impartiality. It's about my ability to talk to other people and get information.
Well, I'll work with Jen's to think about what we want to label that. Later. And we'll throw that into the draft.
And can I ask a question about, um, number four? So it says ex parte information on any application received by a commissioner should be avoided. So what does application mean there, Jen's?
Well, I think it means a prop, you know, a, we'll take for example, Mr., is it Herman?
Yeah. Yeah.
So that would be an application. They apply for conditions permit. So the idea is again, um, the Open Meetings Act says that we've talked a little bit about this. Kristen will send an email to the group saying, hey, I received this information. If the group starts back and forth emailing the whole group, then it becomes a more or less a meeting, just an online meeting, which we're not supposed to do. This provision is even a little more restrictive almost. It kind of makes it sound like, you know, if you do have an ex parte communication, you know, like if you email Anne and you're just discussing, if you think, which is fine to do. This more or less says, maybe that should be part of the record as well, whereas the Open Meetings Act doesn't say that. I don't know if that's, if that's, is that what you mean or?
I also think it's addressing if you receive information directly to you, that you need to forward it to me so I can send it out to everybody.
Well, I was wondering, cause it says, I think the term application is too restrictive.
Okay, any information?
Yeah, because like this love thing that we got sent back, that's not an application any longer. That. That is a decision that we have to readdress.
It's an agenda item.
It's an agenda item.
So I think that's, I've read that somewhere in the book, it, it's, it refers, we're not supposed to talk about anything that's on a published agenda coming up. But we can talk about past stuff.
So X.
Decided on, things that might come up in the future, but hasn't actually been on an, is not published on an agenda, and decisions haven't been made.
So that could be changed if you'd like.
Yeah, I think we should.
So ex parte information on any agenda item?
Yeah, or items on.
Current agenda item?
Published, the current published agenda.
Or what if it's not even published yet?
Then it's fair game.
On items, well, what about ex parte information on any item coming before the planning commission?
That's good.
But we don't know what, whether or not it's, it's not officially coming before us until it's published. Cause it could come off, you know, it might not end up on the agenda.
Well, we can, I know, I think we should just leave it to Gens to fix.
Well, we'll get something along those lines.
Cause I mean, you, you go to, you go to five five, the commission members may seek information from other commission members. But you go to five four and you are not allowed to talk to each other.
Well, so I, I'm just thinking of when we had the helicopter come before us. I wanted, I reached out to the planning commission in bluff because they had rejected it. So I could get info on why it was rejected, so, um.
And you have rights to do that, if you receive information from them, I think what this is saying is that we then forward it to everybody.
The talking between county, uh, planning commissioners would not be ex parte.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's.
Right?
Yeah.
Lloyd, so.
Yeah.
We can talk to each other about agenda items.
But I think it's, it's the public.
But if someone from the public talks to us about an agenda item, we need to share.
And I kinda look at it, that last one, that five four, it's. Any information on any application received by a commissioner. I mean, versus going through your administration and, and being. Um, put on the agenda, so I, I think it's talking about two different things about our communication. And the way you receive, uh, either agenda items or applications.
And I think maybe we reword that so it's not just applications, like let's say somebody submitted a subdivision plat to Melissa.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, which is completely different.
Yeah, so it just needs to be broader.
Okay, so there's two things that have come up this week, um, that I would like to make changes to, to work better for admin. Go ahead.
I have some others, too.
Sure, let's go.
Let me just, okay, so, um. Under chapter four, number eleven. Four, backwards. Number eleven, there's a duplication in here. There shall be no debate or argument between individuals in the audience. And then it says, there shall be no debate or argument between individuals, I think that is redundant.
So Anne, you can't argue with Lloyd?
No, no, it said the audience.
She's just gonna pick him.
We can argue all we want.
Okay, what else you got?
As long as it's.
I have, I just have, I just, I mean, given what's happened recently. Uh, the chair can order the removal of a disorderly person? How on earth is Trent gonna do that?
Manhandle them.
So I, I don't know that we want something in our bylaws that we can't.
Well, he would just call the law enforcement. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if we have large meetings, law enforcement will likely be here already, um, but.
I understand that, but if, but if this nice woman got up and started to threaten us, right? You know, Trent could say, get out of here, just say, no.
We would just pause the meeting until law enforcement came and removed them.
I just wanna make sure we're all aware that that's.
It would be awkward for a few minutes, that's for sure.
Okay, so then the next one is, I didn't know this until I read these thoroughly. Four of us have to be present in person for a quorum. So if, like if Anne hadn't come, and she had been online, we still would not have had a quorum.
Yeah, these, these were pre-COVID.
Yeah, so I wonder if we wanna loosen that up a bit, you know, unless there is a.
I'm not sure we can on that one, there might be some state rules, so you would like it a little bit looser if you can?
Should have it looser, cause I don't, I don't, I mean, during COVID, did you guys all, did four people come here at a time?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I just think.
Does everybody else agree with that? Like if we can get four, whether in person or online?
Yeah, I think that's.
That is.
Fourteen.
Number fourteen.
Which right here.
I don't know, I have some heartache with that, I think.
Oh, I, I don't care, I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of it.
It's just another way to slow, it'll slow the process down, if, if you don't allow some flexibility there.
I think we've actually done it.
Okay, okay, I, I, I just.
Lloyd, Lloyd, what are you thinking?
Oh, we, we make a commitment to what we do here. And yet, you know, one of us are gone here and there, and then sometimes you add a couple missing, but.
Okay. I think. No, I'm thinking more of like an, you know, an emergency where.
Which, which we did have that in the earlier bylaws, years and years and years ago, like when Steve was getting, uh, his wife was having medical. So he was able to call in, that was a stipulation, and it was, it was a.
Well, that's, that's still in, that's still in here.
Yeah, like the snow day, instead of counseling, we could have just switched to online.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think we need to have a little more flexibility.
Is that, that, like, weather conditions, et cetera, they're covered later, right? That's in the.
No, I didn't see that.
Commissioner participation by real-time communication shall allow them to participate and may vote on any matter.
It is. Yeah, four fourteen.
So on fourteen, we need to add, I'll double check the rest of the document, but we need to add something about due to. Acts of God, we may go to an online meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Kristen, I, just a quick question.
We can't.
Do you have this on the screen so we can see it?
We.
Can, can you make it bigger?
It's as, about as big as I can get it.
Okay, yeah.
Is that better? And then the last one I had was, um, my understanding is state law says a person with a conflict of interest. Is no longer required to recuse themselves. And our bylaws still say the person has to recuse themselves. We can, we can make ours stricter, is my understanding, but I wondered.
So how do you want that?
I, I just wanted to point out it is contrary to what the law says, state law says.
So state law says they may, and we are saying they are required.
Right.
Okay, do we want to loosen that, or?
I don't think so.
No.
I think so, we.
I'm fine with it, you stayed it, but you can still vote, and I'm fine with that.
Why?
Um.
Why, why wouldn't we want them to recuse themselves?
No.
We are, that's what we're saying is.
We are making.
Yeah.
We are requiring you, if you have a conflict of interest.
Yeah, if you're involved in anything, it's on the agenda, you need to, it needs to be known.
But.
I like that, it keeps it clean. They can vote.
They can vote.
This says they can't, right?
No.
This says they, this says they cannot vote.
So you cannot, you know, attempt to influence the other members using your power.
A member with a conflict of interest shall be required to recuse him or herself. From voting on the matter.
Or voting on the matter.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's what other people do, that's what other bodies do, if you have a conflict of interest, you just.
Well, not to bring up Trent, but since he's on our panel, like he abstained in the last vote, because he had an, uh, interest in it.
But that was a choice, that was a.
Yeah. And yeah, Lloyd's in it.
This would require him to do it. That, you know, the difference I see is, I mean, this came up in, for the bluff elections, like you have a business person. You know, on the, on the bluff town council, you know, she doesn't wanna recuse herself. Whenever there's anything that helps, makes the best, business community stronger, right? But technically, maybe she should, but I understand the argument that she's representing the business community.
Well, that's a broad impact, like she's not.
She's not saying this is helping my particular place.
If it's personal, then I feel like that.
So do we want to loosen this, or do we want to leave it as is?
I would like to leave it.
I'm fine with leaving.
Read the first sentence of that, though.
Oh, planning commission member shall.
That's a conflict.
Law regarding conflicts of interest. So that says that we.
So do we delete that first?
I think so.
Sentence? Since those are conflicting, and we'll have stricter. Stricter guidelines, stricter policies.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, anything else from the commissioners?
Is there something at the end that says, um, that there can be, we can vote, or the chair can call a vote to disregard some rules? Out of any rules?
Yeah, that was, where was that? We just had it. Um, I think it's at the top here.
About suspending rules?
Yeah. Where was that? We just barely looked at it.
Well, it's the very last one, it's article eight, number two.
There we go.
Oh, it's a rule of procedure, so what is that?
The idea is you can, th- these rules are not the same as a state law. They're designed to have cer- they're designed to promote certain. Methods of business that the public can agree with and have confidence in, and that control what you do and so forth. But you can't suspend the rules and then do something that's contrary to what the minimum standard of, in the state law. So the voting, uh, on a conflict of interest is an example right there, you know? You can, you can have a tighter rule. Um, but you couldn't have, you couldn't suspend the rules and say, anyone with a conflict doesn't even have to make it known, you know? So, I don't know.
Does seven one still exist?
Yeah, I mean, we, we haven't been. Well, we haven't been going to trainings, and also, I know I need to pay you guys. Um, I need to track down several of you for your I nine, which you haven't given me out, and they're not here tonight ironically. So, um, but it's been a little hectic, and I know I've been keeping track of when we've paid you, and we'll backlog those as soon as I have. A little more help, starting Monday.
You don't need I nine for people who are using birthmark?
Huh?
You don't need I nine.
They said they needed social security numbers and. Driver's licenses and, so. The clerk's office is holding that hostage.
Okay.
So there's two I would like to, um, address here. Um, the first one is. Uh, we've been having some internal conflicts and some solutions to that. I will be working directly with Lyman Duncan in the clerk's office to make sure that notices are posted. For the Board of County Commission meetings, for any of the recommendations that we are moving forward. Um, in addition to that, uh, Trent Schaefer will be the one presenting at county commissions. For any of the recommendations that we have of this board. Um, so I will be supporting him on the backend, and he will actually be presenting the information.
Where's that in the bylaws?
It is. It is article three, section three eight.
Three eight.
So it's right here, we will, we will be.
It'll be commission, planning commission chair.
The planning commission chair will.
Shall present the committee's recommendations?
Yep. And I will ensure with the clerk's office that that is, um, properly noticed in the future.
Okay.
So Anne, can you give me, can you describe what you're talking about, how it would look in example?
So we would make a re- recommendation to move forward to county commission. Um, I would do the.
Regarding what?
Even this.
Any of them, even this.
Okay.
So any recommendations coming out of this board, um, I would do the legwork on it as the admin. And, uh, Trent would be doing the presentation.
And it would be on the agenda for the county commission?
Correct.
So when you say talk about noticing, is there some special noticing that?
Yes, so the Board of, uh, this was stemmed out of a missed public notice for Lisbon Valley Mines, which is now getting kicked down the road a couple more weeks. Um, and we just missed getting it on the county commission. Uh, radar, and so, uh, we need some accountability there, and. I would like to have the accountability and be empowered to work with the clerk's office to actually make sure that that's getting done.
So where is that in this document?
It's not, that's more of an internal.
Okay, so, so then to the one that you were just talking about, you know. Trent's not always gonna be chair, and not, it's not always gonna be somebody from Monticello. And I'm wondering if we could have a little more flexibility if we're gonna change it, so what if?
Or vice chair?
Well, or planning staff, or the county administrator, or the planning commission chair or vice chair. I mean, have some choice in there. You know?
There's people online waiting to be let in.
Led in?
Into the meeting, sorry to interrupt you guys.
Oh, you're good.
Okay, so we'll, we'll add those options in.
I think you have options as opposed to. Just one person.
Okay.
I like the person very much.
Anything else on bylaws that we want to discuss? Okay, so anything else on bylaws? Do we feel like it's close enough that if we put a draft together, that we could actually vote on this next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as Cody's here.
And doesn't say anything.
Okay.
Okay. Number three. Presentation of Public Awareness Committee, Shannon Brooks. Or Julia Brooks.
We're just all up here, kind of in the beginning part, but.
Okay, we just wanted to introduce you to this committee, you may not be aware that, that we've been operating for a few months now since January. Um, with all the issues and concerns that people have in the public, and pitchforks that showed up here, and all this about the ordinance, we decided to get together. My wife and I, uh, her husband Dave, uh, uh, Marjorie and Joel. And Wes and Zola Hunt from Blanding. And so we go around, um, at the same time the last group of workshops that Kristen was doing, we went around and did, uh. We did five different meetings all through the county, we've done that twice, um, trying to educate on whatever's going on here. Um, one of the things that we wanted to do, uh, based on the, the feedback we're getting from the public was a survey to find out what exactly. Since this ordinance is for unincorporated, it's not for the cities. We didn't have any feedback, official feedback, from the unincorporated, so we did that. We did that because we saw a survey in the general plan, but that's, that's a little bit different, that's for the whole county, including, uh, in city and out of city. So we did this one specifically, uh, two hundred and thirty-six entries, and so we're just gonna walk through that, we've got a prepared statement. It'll go faster if we just read the statement rather than try to walk you through it, and Sarah's gonna kick us off.
Um, so, hi, uh, we did also just bring kind of what we found, uh, the county commissioners earlier this week, so I apologize. If you've heard this already or listened to that, it's gonna be deja vu for a sec, sorry. Um, but again, my name's Sarah Goodman, my husband and I live outside of unincorporated Monticello. Um, or we air in unincorporated Monticello, about seven miles outside of town, um, and so just in reference to that survey. Um, uh, we put in a lot of volunteer hours getting people's feedback and, um. Hearing what they have to say, and so this is just kind of compilation of, um, statements in our meetings and also survey results. Um, so in front of you, you have the full survey results, um, but we'd like to draw your attention to the four most compelling findings we uncovered. Uh, before we talk about. Uh, before we talk about policy, we need to talk about language. Because in this lan- in this conversation, one word is doing a lot of heavy lifting and the word is rural. Everyone says rural, but the meaning depends on who you're, who is speaking and that matters. And that difference in definition isn't just semantic, it's shaping policy and potentially misguiding it. Our data is showing that rural does not mean neglected, it means intentional self-reliance. Uh, we asked the community directly, what definition of rural best applies to San Juan County? And the results split almost evenly between two community grounded ideas. Fifty percent said it means a county or large areas of county with low population. And forty-six percent said it means large acreage agricultural areas or homesteads free of urban services and qualities. Uh, in both definitions, you'll notice a common theme, space, freedom and minimal services. But here's where the tension lies. Uh, decision makers often use a different lens. To some in government, rural simply means not urban yet, a blank slate, a space to be planned for, built up, or eventually annexed into something more modern. And that's not what the people are saying. In fact, only two percent of survey respondents said rural areas should be quote places for municipalities to expand into. Um, we see that as a fringe view and not a foundation. And what about urban? We did ask that too. The majority, seventy percent defined urban as any place with concentrated neighborhoods, utilities, paved roads and services. Only thirteen percent said a city needs a hundred thousand people to be urban and another fourteen percent pointed to high density cities like Salt Lake or Denver as their definition of urban. So what does that tell us? It tells us that the community sees urban not as a population count, but as an infrastructure footprint. If an area has curbs, subdivisions and zoning constrage- constraints, it feels urban whether it has five hundred people or fifty thousand. That matters especially in unincorporated land. Because if commissioners and planners define rural as simply a zone on the path to becoming urban, you'll pursue policies that transform open land into controlled development. But if residents define rural as something to protect for its independence and lifestyle, they'll see those same policies as invasive. It's not just a difference in opinion, it's a difference in worldview. We urge you that before you vote on any ordinance, especially one affecting unincorporated land, we ask you to pause and, and ask, are we using the same dictionary as the people we represent? Because if we're not, then even our best intentions will be misunderstood and worse, resented. The second finding seems to be a crisis of representation and communication. When asked directly, do you feel represented in planning the county's future? An overwhelming seventy-three percent of residents said they feel dissatisfied. That's nearly three quarters of our community feeling ignored and the very process this ordinance is supposed to reflect. Only three percent said they feel satisfied. That's not a margin of error, that's a mandate to stop and listen. Even more revealing when asked, is San Juan County following its general plan? Fifty-eight percent said, I don't know. And thirty-eight percent said no. This signals a deep disconnect between the county's leadership and the public's understanding or trust in how land use decisions are made. If the existing plan feels invisible or ignored, why would he expect, why would we expect this new ordinance to be any different? One especially telling, one especially telling data point revealed that nearly seventy-nine percent of respondents do not currently receive San Juan County's email notices. This underscores a vital opportunity for education and outreach. If residents don't know about the tools available to stay informed, how can we expect meaningful engagement? Making signups more accessible, simplifying the process and ensuring visibility of these communication channels could go a long way in strengthening uh connection and trust. And Shannon's gonna wrap up the rest.
Now let's talk about what matters to people. This is a finding we're calling Freedom to Thrive. Homestead businesses as the heart of rural prosperity. In the multi-section question asking, what is the most important future development for San Juan County? The top three responses were less government regulations, eighty-one point four percent. More protection to citizen rights, seventy-three point three percent. More homestead family businesses, forty-four point nine percent. These answers send a powerful message. People are not asking for more zoning constraints, more oversight or more bureaucracy. They're asking for autonomy. For the freedom to work their land, raise their families and build livelihoods without unnecessary red tape. And when it comes to homestead family businesses, this isn't just about lifestyle, it's about smart economics. Allowing homestead businesses on agricultural zone private property isn't just a nod to tradition. It's a practical, scalable economic development strategy. In rural counties like ours, where access to commercial infrastructure is limited, enabling residents to operate businesses from their land removes a major barrier to entry. It reduces overhead, eliminates community uh, uh, commute costs and supports localized economies. More market gardens and artisan goods to repair shops and home bakeries. These enterprises don't just support families, uh, don't, don't just support the family that runs them. They circulate money within the county and increase community resilience. For many families in San Juan County, that could represent twenty to fifty percent of their total income. A lifeline that doesn't require federal assistance, but local permission to earn. Moreover, these businesses require no major infrastructure investment and can scale responsibly without compromising the rural character of our communities. They also cater to tourism, agriculture and local service gaps, all vital factors in our area. To restrict these enterprises would sweep, uh, uh, undersweeping uh, land use policies is not just short sighted. It's uh economically counterproductive. Supporting homestead businesses is a low risk, high return strategy to empower our rural economy. Next, I'd like to address the last hot button topic that has surfaced through this process. Concerning the county's consideration of hiring a code enforcement officer. Citizens want partnership, not pol- not policing on their land. At first glance, this may seem like a simple administrative decision. But in the context of what our residents have shared, it becomes far more significant and far more problematic. And, and let me highlight exactly what we're talking about. The position that was just filled had a list of duties. The top list was um, basically building inspector stuff, which you g- you gotta have, sure. Then about four lines down, it said policy compl- it said uh, code compliance. And the language used there was very different than the language used at the top. And so I asked the question, and I've been asking the question and I'm gonna keep asking the question. When we were told over and over again that we're not gonna have enforcement in this county, that language could ex- very easily be used for code compliance. Nobody wants that. Let's start with trust. As we mentioned before, seventy-two point five percent of respondents feel dissatisfied with how the county is involving them in planning for the future. Over thirty-eight percent believe the county is not following their own general plan and more than fifty-eight percent aren't even sure of what that plan is. Again, people feel unheard, disconnected and skeptical, skeptical of the direction the county is taking. And, and let me add there as well. If I don't know what the general plan is, that's not on you, that's on me, right? Go read the general plan. Um, but we don't have a culture of, of people getting involved and, and getting educated, so we need to improve that. And yet into the environment of distrust, we would introduce enforcement. Hiring a code enforcement officer right now doesn't look like a neutral step forward. It looks like increased regulation, increased surveillance and a further departure from what people are asking for, which according to the data is less regulation, more autonomy and the ability to live and work freely on their own land. A code enforcement officer or compliance officer directly contradicts that message. To no one's surprise, when asked how important are private property rights, ninety-eight point seven percent respondents responded with very important. This risks turning good citizens into violators. Not because they're acting in bad faith, but because the ordinance hasn't been crafted in good collaboration. And then there's the question of cost. Is this really the best use of taxpayers' dollars? Especially when public trust is already fragile. Eighty-seven percent of citizens surveyed do not agree with the county uh, that the county should pay someone to seek out and enforce all land use violations. What would it look like to spend those same funds on community outreach, on education, on permitting support or small business development? We should be investing in building relationships, not cracking down on citations. We uh, w- we should be inviting people to participate, not giving them new reasons to feel policed. Based on the data and common sentiment, the community does not believe hiring a code enforcement or code compliance officer at this time is a responsible or effective use of public resources. This ordinance as written doesn't reflect the voice of the people. It complicates instead of simplifies. Restricts, and of course, we're talking about the two thousand twenty-five proposed. It restricts instead of empowers, enforces instead of represents. Most concerning, it sets a course for development the community clearly does not support. Now is not the time to push this forward. It's time to pause, revise with humility and invite true community participation, not just public comment. If passing, if passed in this current form, this ordinance will feel disconnected and deepen the divide between leaders and the people they serve. Let's rebuild trust by listening plainly, powerfully and together. Thank you. Okay.
Shannon, I just wanna clarify one thing. When you're saying code enforcement officer, you're referring to the building officially just hired, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Um, and, and that's because it listed on the website code compliance and it lists out what that means. I have it right here.
Okay.
I printed it off the website.
Is that building code compliance that's state regulated?
I, I'm very happy to show it to you real quick.
No.
Right here.
No, we'll move on. So-
It says right here at the top, it says enforcement of building codes, that's at the top. Four one, four items down, it says code compliance, investigate and address code violations, working with contractors and property owners to-
So that would be the building code.
Except that's the building codes already covered at the top. The building code says-
Alright, we'll talk about it, we'll talk about it later.
National building codes ensuring structures are safe-
Shannon, go ahead.
Moving on, number four.
Well, I, I was just asking-
So this is-
Just answering the question that was asked.
We are going to just revisit this. We don't need to deep dive it tonight. This, what you have before you tonight are changes that I received in January that the county commission did not discuss. And so therefore we do not have these reflected in the online documents. And so what I would like to do tonight is go through this bullet point list that was, as it was presented at county commission on January twenty-first. And let's just get these changes that are more or less administrative that make a lot of sense to me. Get your good graces on them so that we can get the documents online updated as needed. Um, so first just some administrative comments. Um, clarification that did is, that the design and development standards would be responsi- responsibility of applicants from this point forward? Um, so that's basically saying that we can't uphold anything to the past, um, anything that's currently built legally. We will um, bring in as a grandfathered or non-conforming use. Um, clarification that you currently cannot live in an RV dwelling long term. Um, there's been a lot of people believing that we are taking that right away and we, you may not live in an RV right now. Um, we are trying to change that with the restrictions of one unit on a half acre, two units on a one acre minimum. And we can revisit that later or we can revisit it now. What would you like to do, Trent? You wanna keep moving along?
Uh, yeah, let's just-
Okay. Um, and we also added the seasonal RV hunting camps. Um, we had a addition to the international building code language for private roads that I just, I'd missed getting that in the red line set. Okay, use table requests. Um, and if you wanna move to, if you have a laptop, you move to the use table while I read these off.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. I just had it up. Give me a sec. Okay.
We wanna add agricultural production and hay production as permitted and recreational support because we also are supporting this type of recreation like trail rides and, and that. And so um, ways to support livestock. Um, a request for kennels to be added as a conditional use in agriculture because we added veterinarian to agriculture and so we needed to, to coordinate that and pair that up. Um, request for barber, beauty shops and cosmetic services to be added as permitted in ag. Um, request for fabrication of metal products to be permitted in ag. Uh, request for paint and powder coating shops to be added to the use table and allowed in agriculture as a permitted use.
What was that?
Paint and powder coating. That one I might debate, maybe we have it conditional be- due to the nature of how much chemical powder coating are we doing? Um-
And you want that added to ag? We don't have it as a use at all.
Right.
Right, so we need to add it-
That was a request from the kid.
So we would add it and make it permitted in ag?
That's what the request was. I, I kinda feel like this one should be conditional. And it would be in ag and, and others, right? As we go across the board, so.
I, I think we ought to put it as permitted.
Okay.
Permitted. I, I don't see anything that could-
Is terrible about it? Okay, cool. Is there any others, since that one's a new one, what else do we want to add that into? What other?
Industrial.
Okay.
Commercial.
Community commercial?
Yeah.
Highway commercial?
Yeah.
Uh, multi-use probably no, cuz that's a little bit smaller, different idea there, right? Okay. Um, and then request for butcher to be added and allowed in ag, community commercial, multi-use. With this one, there's a lot of state inspections and that with these that, that would mitigate, I think, a lot of the risks. So I feel okay about having it as just permitted. Um, anybody feel differently about butcher? Conditional versus permitted versus permitted?
Catcher.
Mm-hmm. Uh, yeah, it's, it's all, it all has to follow-
It has to follow the state, like to get rid of carcasses, let's say, you know, that's a state regulation. Okay, so anything else, just, um, I'm going to go back through the notes again of every comment we've received and make sure we've addressed it. Um, but this is what I had received up and, up through January.
So are you just going to enter them as black type again or are you going to choose a-
We'll do much red.
Dollar?
So anything that you haven't, anything we changed, so, so in January, right, we kinda blacked it all out. We said this is, this is what we agreed on.
Yeah.
So any changes that we make from now through adoption will be in red for this wave.
Okay, so I have a question about how we're gonna handle all of the emails we received from people.
A lot.
Yeah, we've gotten a lot of emails. Are we gonna have a work group? Where we can actually go through each email and address it or what's, what's the plan for that?
I think that will be on me. And so I'll go through each email and make a bullet point list like this.
Okay. You know what would be-
If there's anything debatable or discuss, like needs a discussion, I'll bullet point those as discussions on this. But if it's just people requesting, a lot of them are just one, can you add this to the use table? That's easy for me to just put on a bullet point.
Just put that into a separate document and not into this document?
Okay.
And then we can, okay, let's pull that and put it in.
Okay. Do you wanna, can we do a Google share document or something like that where people could add?
With the commission?
Yep. Is that allowed?
For open meetings, is what you wanted about?
Yeah. And then we would, we, as we go through comments and stuff, we make sure it's on that list and then we would, we would publish it to the agenda.
Um, if it's a place for, if you, this one thing you could just go and add something or make a the idea is you, you know, a, a meeting like this is an open meeting, but a meeting online with discussion and so forth is also an open meeting. So if your Google sheet is not collaboration, discussion and so forth, then it's okay.
It would literally just be a list.
So if Trent wants to go on and add something that will be considered in a meeting later, no, I have seen a problem.
Okay, so let's do that. I'll start with- Okay, so let's do that. I'll start with some sort of a shared form, whether that's Google or like Microsoft or whatever it looks like.
I need a password.
I know, I'm gonna have to help. I'll come down to the shop and help you with this technology.
Can can we have, um,
Yeah, I can get it.
Can we have some sort of way of identifying which which like person made that point?
Sure.
I think, because that'll make it easier too.
Sure.
Sure.
You know, okay.
Put your name and parentheses or?
Oh, no, I'm not talking about us. I'm talking about the emails we receive.
Why don't we just do a first last initial so that, I don't want, I want people to be able to speak very freely, and if they so let's just do initials, but you'd be able to identify that on an email matching it up.
Well, another way to do it is what date the email was written. I mean, then we could maybe.
How about you do a first, last, initial, and then date of email received?
Not received, written. I think it needs to be written.
Well, sure, yeah. When it was delivered to my mailbox.
I don't know, what do you guys think about that, just so we can track them better?
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes the date that they send it is embedded in the email that has a different date of receipt when it came to your.
Yeah, no, I think we do the day it was, the day it was sent.
Well, so I don't know how, is that easy to search?
Yeah.
Even though it's embedded inside of a another email?
Yeah.
That has a different.
Because it still will show, yeah.
Okay.
At least, at least I think.
I think it should, it should highlight it, right? So Krista, are you saying that what is on the county website right now is all updated as to what we?
It it's what was pitched to county commission.
Okay.
And and this is literally what was pitched to county commission. They did not discuss these items, and so due to the flip side of the coin of if I had just made these changes, then people would be upset that I just made these changes. So we kept this list, we're discussing it tonight. After tonight, we will make these changes and repost it online.
Redline.
Yeah, and and any changes will be redlined.
Okay, and so this is just a, this is what you heard at county commission?
Up to January twenty first.
Okay. So whenever you're gonna get to discuss the ordinance outside, uh, uh, on topics outside of this?
So, um, sorry, we're getting off. We'll go, we'll get back to the list here in just a second. Um, so I don't know how you guys feel about doing more work sessions. I feel like I've work sessioned you to death. Um, and so I would prefer that we work on this during our planning commission meetings in which you are all here, instead of doing additional volunteer time and nights and trying to get work off. And now there's a lot of sports going on at summertime. And quite honestly, I feel like you guys have put in your time and effort on this, and we're willing to do some, but we're I don't feel like I'm willing to put my neck out there quite as far this round. So we'll work on it. We'll work on it during planning commission. You know, we'll give it an hour to a night, and then whatever we don't get done, we'll just get to the next month. Um, we will be, as soon as we get it to the point of recommendation, we will be doing one more community workshop, and that's it.
You know, one thought I have though is, you know, there's always that sort of push to get us to to approve things, like, how can we do it so it's measured and not rushed?
But not delayed?
But not, well, it's already, you know.
If you don't have a deadline for something, it never gets done.
Yeah.
I mean, that's more or less how it works.
And I.
Put a deadline on something, it never gets done.
Anna and I also.
Actually, I say it all the time.
Anna and I discussed, um, you know, it's always going to be work in progress.
Right.
Always. And Anna and I discussed how we need to have some checkpoints where we're like, okay, after tonight, we are not going back to the use table in the maps. We're done. Those are good enough for now. And we've got to move on. Um, what's happening is we're getting these public comments where we're just rehashing it and rehashing it and rehashing it, and it is never getting pushed forward. So we need to set some cutoffs for ourselves to say this is our cutoff for the ordinance, because then we need time to publish it to the public so that they have time to review it. If we're constantly changing it every meeting.
No, I.
Like, at some point, we gotta be like, I'm sorry, but we will get to that in our next yearly review.
But I, but what I don't want to have happen is we look at all of the emails we received, and we're supposed to make, you know.
Sense out of it.
Yeah, so if we could have some sort of like structure, it might be helpful that that, I don't know how far out, but you know, at the August, by the August meeting, we will freeze.
So, yeah, the the caveat to this, and Jen's might be able to speak to this a little bit more, the caveat to this is we're kind of working this in the general plan in tandem. Um, the general plan is on Mitch's plate, so he's heading up that effort. And we cannot adopt the land use until the general plan is legally adopted, which is going to take a bit. So I am speculating December at best. Just know that now, and that's why I'm like, I'm not doing any extra work sessions. We'll whittle on it at planning commission.
I miss them in the November meeting.
We're, you're going to Thailand again.
Egypt.
Oh, wow.
That's fine, we'll do it without you. Um, but I mean, very, very realistically, I think it will be December.
Okay.
Um, now we can set those deadlines of when we're going to review it, if we're going to review it every June or or every December, you know, so that we say, okay, we've had this cutoff, any comments coming from this point forward? While we could make changes, we need to have some understanding that it ha, we have to close the the gates at some point and say, thank you for your comments. We will keep them. And when we discuss this at our yearly review, we will look into this.
Well, how much will the changes to the general plan affect this?
Very little.
And what will happen to the Spanish Valley area, general plan, area plan?
The two thousand nineteen?
The landmarks, like regional, yeah, it's a regional master plan. Um, I'm not sure where that sits, because that was a Sitla endeavor.
Yes, and it was pushed.
It's to master, it's to master plans the Sitla property.
Yeah, I'll have their names on that.
It was pushed through by Sitla. We were, we sit here and they said, this is just kind of a, you know, a starting place for where we can work on this, and you remember, yeah. I'm like, well, I can't agree with any of this. Well, no, we're not agreeing with this. This is just a starting point of how to, how to mold this into what we want.
I think looking.
Lies when it came before this.
Well, looking at that plan, it's an idea, right? It's an idea of this big community, since Sitla owns so much land out there. Here's where our artery roads are, here's where our schools would go, but it isn't, it isn't what's actually happening or being constructed. It's an idea of this pristine, beautiful community. Lloyd might have a different opinion on that, but that's not what is happening. And so until Sitla starts to build out that pristine, beautiful utopia, you know, that that plan doesn't necessarily hold weight to, like, the land use regulations.
But the general plan is, the new one that's supposed to be worked on, is that going to include Spanish Valley?
Yeah, what, yes.
And if it, so if it includes Spanish Valley, then it's gonna include Sitla as a little.
And.
They are gonna have to come back and and work on that.
And we considered very much so that master pristine plan. That's, I think we have considered that in the way we've zoned it, knowing that, you know, I mean, we, we matched up like their downtown corridor. We matched that up on Spanish Valley Drive. And so we, we already took that plan and we extended it out, and like I said, we, we already matched a lot of their zones. They call them different names, but the intent of their zones, we matched with the intent of our zones. So it was, it was considered, that is a large, that master plan that Sitla put together is a large part of how we came to the zoning conclusion we did.
And the subsequent zoning decisions that have been made based on future of Sitla development, like location of Balanced Rock, location of Valley Estates, those are things that, so in real life, it's not just a concept anymore. It's starting to actually, we're making decisions based on that plan, so. I mean, I'm just asking the hypothetical, and with the new general plan, will, what will happen to that plan?
It's a, it's a reference. It's a resource reference. It was a.
Well, it, would it change? Would Sitla say, no, we don't want that idea anymore. We're gonna change it.
They could at any moment.
But would, I mean, what's the likelihood, or are we gonna end up still with something pretty much the same as what we?
Our, our general plan is not very specific, right? It's it's kind of the the goals and the values of the county. And that resource by Landmark and Sitla, that resource is good for us to keep in mind. It was a high dollar consultant that put it together. Um, you know, I I think it, they bring up some very important points, especially like collector streets and artery streets, and how do we get people from the highway into the neighborhood? And so it it holds a lot of value, but it doesn't hold weight.
But in light of the data that just was collected by the public on San Juan County residents and their, you know, their vision for what San Juan County should be, how does that sync up with what Spanish Valley should be? I guess, did you have a meeting in Spanish?
No questions.
Um, because this is all one countywide ordinance, so we want to make sure that there's a plan that's going to work with all of them, and if we keep tossing out all of these existing plans, we, Spanish Valley can't go back to looking like unincorporated Monticello or Blanding, right? So
But I think we.
It just goes back in that circle of, well, we have some plans in place for that particular area. Its needs are different. We gotta chop Spanish Valley out into a different, um, we need to look at it differently again.
We do, but going to ordinances is not the answer. I think what is the answer is microzoning Spanish Valley. You know, the rest of the county, we have these huge swaths of things. We really need to go street by street in Spanish Valley and and look at that with a little more of a fine tooth comb. Not spot zoning. But we, we really need to be, the one thing when Lloyd and Ann and I drove around up there, the one thing I realized is that this like step down from the highway system is probably not going to work so great. Um, we have, Spanish Valley's road plan was awful. Every road is a cul-de-sac.
It was never a road plan.
So everything is a dead end cul-de-sac, and I think we need to look at what is actually happening along that cul-de-sac, where our main road, so I would like to go more road by road and look at how we want to zone that. Um, the step down is the ideal, however, most of it's built. So we need to look at kind of what's there and make a compromise to how we can can work with that.
Live with what's there.
And I would change much in what we've already done in the mapping there.
I love this step down from highway commercial to multi-use to community commercial.
I don't think you can, you know, change it much and make anybody happy. I mean, you really could.
I I I think I've got some proposals that, uh, you know, at some point, it may not be this meeting, but that I would like, you know, just put out there and get some feedback on, because in light of what we've done, I I feel like I can, I could illustrate another approach we could take with Spanish Valley. But until we get to a work meeting where we can do that, um, like consolidating all of these public comments, you know, where I, what I'm, my proposing is our is a response to the comments that we're getting from the public and how we could compromise a little bit more in Spanish Valley.
So why don't we, I'll put the Spanish Valley map on our next agenda. Um, and maybe we'd focus just on Spanish Valley at our next meeting? And then we'll take another look at kind of the county as a whole. Would that work, Ann?
That would be great. I think Spanish Valley, we've gotta figure it out in order for everything else to smooth, like, work out with the rest of the parts of the county.
Sure. Um, so that brings me to the zoning map requests, and, um, the live map is the best place to I mean, this one is updated pretty much like two days after. Um, so we've got a couple spots. Um, the first one is up here, East Allen Street's right here, and this runs into Balanced Rock. And, or, where am I? Yes, that's Balanced Rock, right? Um, so this, this property owner right here asked to be in multi-use. Um, it is along this East Allen Street, and so this borders community commercial and multi-use, and I felt like due to the circumstance of not creating an island, it seems appropriate to allow him to be multi-use since that was requested. So.
Isn't there a subdivision? Isn't there four houses right there?
I think it's two lots right here. And then there's another one here.
I don't think we should talk about Spanish Valley until we actually sit down and talk about Spanish Valley, because I don't think I have kids. It doesn't mesh with some of the, um, other. Well, so for example, right now, as it's, it's.
So it's.
Development is multiple use, and I have an issue with that. And I would like to, you know, discuss why that is multiple use, and that would domino effect this property too.
That's a lot of parcels. Is it one request for all of those?
Um, yeah, he owns a bunch, and he's buying in a couple more. So the the rationale for this is because up here, we have community commercial, community commercial. And, hold on, where was it? Sorry. We have, there it is. There's community commercial here, multi-use. All of this is community commercial.
Yes.
And so their argument was, you are driving down a community commercial roadway. Why not allow us to do like overnight rentals here in multi-use? On your way to Balanced Rock, which also has lodging, so it's kind of a weird stop, because all of a sudden you have all these little residential homes, but they're like, it is literally on the same road to the hotel back here.
With that logic, everything would end up being um, multiple use, you know. We, we have to, we have to carve out our residential somehow without making, like, we're just outzoning all potential residential when we when we start connecting, oh, this is this, and this is this, and this is this. Like, if you want to microzone.
I thought this one made sense to go multi-use. Any other thoughts?
So that's just why I'm saying I think we should talk about this when we talk about Spanish Valley, because we need to, we need to back up, and we need to talk about Lydia.
Okay, should we just put it on hold till next meeting?
Sure.
Because it's a can of worms when you start talking about Spanish Valley and.
Absolutely.
Okay, the next one was covered, hopefully, at the next county commission meeting. Um, request for Upper Pat Creek. That is um, so the Brownells right here. Actually, here, I'm gonna switch over to this map. Actually, here, I'm gonna switch over to this map. So that's this up here. The Brownells have requested for all of this to stay in ag. Um, for the reason that they are ag and, um, they're potentially looking to do a veteran, a possibility of doing a veterinarian up there. And so there's, there's a lot of reasons where they would like to be ag.
So the change would be from the proposed recreational use to ag?
Correct.
I don't have a problem with that.
We generally okay with that one? Okay? Um, Pat Creek, I think we'll hold until another, till the next one. Um, it is a fifty fifty split, almost dead on. Um, and unfortunately, it isn't split one side or the other. It's split right down the middle. So right down the middle wants, so most of this wants recreational support. And each of the far sides wants residential. Um, so this is, we'll probably be back to talk with you guys um, about what we want to do about this because it is so evenly divided. Um, so just have that one on your, on your radar.
I thought there was just one parcel that wanted to be recreational support. Did I misread that?
No, there's a, there's a bunch. So we have a, we have a map, um, maybe what I could do is do, I don't wanna put neighbor against neighbor, I'm kind of cautious about that, but what I would like to do, just to be totally transparent about, is maybe on this map, we will identify which parcels by the parcel have requested rec support. So that we can actually see exactly who would like what.
At what point did the, did it become fifty fifty? A date and time?
Um, when did I meet with you guys? December? Or early January? So it would have been a week or two after that.
So as, as of that, long ago, it's been fifty fifty.
I live in Pat Creek and it is not fifty fifty.
Cause my, you know, initially I thought everybody wanted to be residential, except for one lot wanted to be recreational support. And, and if, um, if I'm wrong, I apologize, but my thought is, oh, well, if the county was considering letting that one lot become recreational support, then all the other neighbors could be like, well, yeah, if they're gonna get it, then we should do that too. And then, then it spreads like wildfire, right?
Yeah, and this.
Is that, is that what happened?
This one's very tricky. Um, the covenants are also another, um, you know, side of this and the HOAs, and so.
That's what I was gonna ask it. I, I thought there were some pretty strict covenants in there.
There are. So the covenants do not allow for overnight rentals. And it seems like most of people wanting recreational support would like it so they can do overnight rentals. And this is aside from Pat Creek Ranch here.
But even if you made it recreational support, if the covenant's covered, I mean, it can be fought in court. Keep them from having night rentals.
I think there's how many different sub, you got four, six different subdivisions?
I think there's five, one, one, two, three, four, five, six, including the HOA. The ranch, the ranch wants residential support, no one objects to that.
Right.
One other subdivision that included three parcels um, is NIPS. On what they want. And then another subdivision that owned by the same person wants recreational support.
And I think so because there's such few members per subdivision, it seemed like they wanted the county to zone them as recreational support so that they would have the option to dissolve the HOA later if they want. But they would rather have more options than less options due to our zoning. From that side, the residential side of it is, you know, we bought up here to be in a quiet secluded place and we want that protected. And so this is, this is a real struggle.
Well, it sounds like the ref, you know, the county appreciates rural li- living that we shouldn't disrupt that, or I mean, we shouldn't.
Yes, but, but then you're treading on my rights because you won't let me do this.
But currently, they're not. We're not treading on anything, cause we haven't, their don has not changed. Their residential.
They're not residential now, you're multi-use.
They're multi?
They're half, it's split right down the middle of ag and multi-use right now. So anyways, just roll it around, uh, maybe talk to community members. Um, cause this one's gonna be a real hard cog to fit together up there. Um, on how we want to handle that and attempt to make most people happy. Um, so we'll, we'll hold that one on the next meeting as well when we discuss Spanish Valley. Um, ordinance requests. So on page thirteen, we wanted to remove the animal limits for kennel. Um, and just define it as an establishment for the breeding or boarding of dogs and or cats. Again, that could get out of hand really fast. And we would rely on the nuisance ordinance at that point in time if somebody has fifty dogs.
I read an article in Ogden, somebody had a hundred and sixty seven.
Oh my goodness.
And I think this one is, I mean, we, we get it, you know, my neighbor has fifty dogs running around. We get that now. Um, you know, I can, I, I don't know if this is the best language for it. Is it a commercial establishment for the breeding or boarding, or is it, you know, somebody is breeding hunting dogs for themselves? And they've got twenty hounds out back? And so, so maybe think about this one, um, but right now, do you wanna run with that definition?
Remove the request.
So no, so right now, the animal limit, I think is four dogs and or cats? Do we want to remove the animal limit, or do you think that's?
I think we should remove it. I, I think it's a, I think it's a loo, I, I just don't think there's a good way to handle it.
Is, is conditional use not a?
So we've put kennel, I believe kennels on our use table as a conditional use. Let me just double check here.
Cause maybe the number of kennels is restricted in size?
So kennel, so kennel was anything over, I'd have to look at it right now. So kennel is a conditional use in ag, highway commercial and community commercial. And the definition.
This shows right now. I'm looking at what's online.
I'm looking at what I just printed. So maybe I, you know what, I updated that from county commission, cause it's in red.
Okay.
So the one that got updated was.
So this just online, it just shows highway commercial and community commercial conditional.
And I added the request, sorry, mine's in red, to ag.
To ag.
Yeah, based on that. Right there.
Okay, that's right. This is the one that's got so loud.
Um, so in our definitions currently, kennel, what would constitute a kennel is the keeping of more than four dogs and or cats at least four months old or similarly sized household pets in said numbers. Any combination of exceeding four household pets constitutes a kennel.
It does, it seems like it should be tied to a purpose.
Well, I mean, but then how many purposes do we put in? I think that opens a can of worms. So I think this one, the fuss with this one has come out of a lot of people who have hunting dogs. And they've got twelve hounds. But I can tell you that most of the neighbors do not love the twelve hounds. So does that constitute a kennel when you've got twelve hounds outside all night?
I don't know. It seems to me that a limit on the number of animals is something that would happen within an incorporated area. Not in a rural area.
So do you like the definition we have as an establishment for the breeding or boarding of dogs and or cats? And breeding, what if that's personal breeding versus commercial breeding?
Delete on Utah.
Commercial breeding?
That's a joke.
Only. There's a lot of comebacks I could say there. I'm gonna shut my mouth before I say something. Um, okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and change that one. Um, we, now, because we have had another legislative session, we have more state of Utah codes we have to update. So the legal team will be reviewing those and we'll come up with the draft documents of, of what has, has changed since March. Um, and then any other change or requests that you would like me to add to the next agenda?
Well, can we, real quick on the use table, um, I missed my chance, but I did have one.
Sure.
Have we thought about adding home-based business?
So home-based business is exempt. So cottage industry, home-based business, these are all commercial uses. And home-based business, like, they don't have to get a business license technically.
So if I ran a grooming operation out of my house, is that a home-based business?
Do you have parking out front for people?
Yes.
Do you have a sign out front?
No.
But you have parking? So you're a public space.
Well, so this is the thing, what's wrong with allowing a home-based business that allows people to come to your home as long as it's not like twenty-four seven and as long as it's not, you know, twenty parking spaces?
We've been rolling around, we've been rolling around the point of sell. Cause here's what happens, you have your little groomer shop and we think that's awesome and we totally support you being a groomer. Well, business is going really well, you gotta expand. And now you're hiring other people to come to the shop out back and you've got eight cars coming in and out there all the time and you're grooming a bunch of dogs. And so we need to be careful about allowing for growth.
Well, that's.
Because that's the whole point, is we want the home-based business to grow?
I don't think so. Like, if your lot is one acre, you've only got one acre to work off of. And it's, and so there's a limit to what you can grow. And, and so that's why I'm saying in residential, can we not have, can we not encourage home-based businesses that are of a small scale? So people that, you know, they don't, if they really wanna expand, then maybe they invest in some cheaper land somewhere else with better access and more parking and all of that. You know, that's norm, like, to me, that's a logical step to do. But if you're just limited to a half acre or whatever, your, your, your business intention, you know, at least you started up there. And then you move to another location that you can expand.
So we need to really.
Do, they don't always just grow right where they are.
Instead of changing this list, cause these are hmm, commercial uses, right? We do not want to dabble in this list of what you can do privately or residentially. So, um, you know, Shannon's group came up with canning, home canning. Well, home canning's not on the list. We're not touching that because that's private.
That's why I'm saying like a, a use of term, small scale, home-based business or something like.
So the, but those are, again, exempt. So we need to come up with a better ex, ex- example or definition of cottage industry because that's getting lost. So right now, as it's written, cottage industry, when you cross into a public space is when you have parking out front, a sign, and the point of sale is on premise. So if you're making, I don't care if you made ten thousand cans of jam at your house, and you are taking them around to all the grocery stores and cutesy shops to sell, the point of sale is not at your house.
But why, why can't we have that in? Why can't we allow it?
We are.
It is allowed.
That's what I'm saying. Cottage industry, home-based business, totally allowed, go for it, permitted.
As long as there's no point of sale.
But I think she's asking, why can't we have people come to my house?
Let's, yeah, let's have the point of sale at your house and there's parking at your house. It's just not.
And you need a business license. So that's where you cross over.
Right. So why can't we allow a little of that in residential?
We can, but what are your parameters so that it doesn't get out of hand when things are going really well?
When does it become?
When does it become commercial?
When, when you have a business license.
No, so that's what I'm proposing. Let it, let's allow small commercial in residential.
Then change the zoning to mixed use. Keep your residential residential. If you're gonna start allowing, but you know, every house on the street's got a business going.
Multiple use is generally larger than a, a one acre.
Let's, let's take something that's maybe a little more invasive, like a mechanic shop, no offense.
Well.
Let's say this guy's got a home-based business mechanic shop in his backyard. He's just running it out of his garage. Well, he's the only mechanic around, he's really good, he's cheap. All of a sudden, he needs two more bays. And he's hiring staff to help him. And then he needs more bays and he needs more staff. And now he's got cars lined up and down the street because he doesn't have enough parking for all the cars he's working on. So that's, we have to be very long sighted about, we're allowing this little thing, bake, this little bakery or this little cannery or whatever now, but what does that turn into? Because we want it to turn into that.
Well, we want them to buy, we want them to grow, but move their location.
Which would mean they are moving out of residential.
Larger, a larger size.
I think if you, if it's required to have a business license, move it to where you can actually do it. If you're just doing baked goods and you're selling your eggs or whatever at home.
Right.
All your home stuff, I mean, people go over and get their hair cut somewhere. I mean, they pay with cash and it's not a business license at that point. It becomes a barber shop, it's different. So I think if, if it requires business license, keep it on the residential.
But all, all of those cottage industries are, that's, that's a private use. And we're not touching any of that. You can do truffles, you can do baked goods, you can do cookies that you take down to the gas station and let them sell for you, like, whatever. You can do all of it. We don't care. But as soon as you have parking signage and a point of sale on your house, you are now a public space.
See, and that's why we don't want the nightly rentals in residential zones. It's a, it's a business that requires a business license, the parking. It's the people, the parties, it's di- different people there all the time, you know? It's the same thing with any type of a commercial business. You're gonna have customers, you got, you know, it goes on and on, so.
Well, we're allowing.
That's how we're preserving our residential areas.
But we're not, we're, we're, we are multiple using it. We are not preserving it.
Well, okay, so, and, but, so just, all you're gonna do is change.
They wanna change all of the residential in Spanish Valley to multiple use. We are not protecting, you know.
Well, it's also been kind of based on what's happened, like, the original intent of res, of the residential is now residential flex with an overnight accommodations overlay. Well, hell, that's pretty close to multi-use. And you got the, so that's where we need to find those compromises.
And every.
Well, it's not allowed in highway commercial.
Yeah, it is.
Overnight rentals?
That's what, the chapter ten was written about was.
Well, currently, but not in the proposed one.
Right.
Because we don't want single-family homes on highway commercial.
Right.
Even if they're being used as a business, we don't want that infrastructure there.
There are existing auto repair shops in residential currently. And this, the proposal, which I don't agree with, is to, oh, well, we'll just multiple use that neighborhood.
Correct.
To correct that zoning. Well, then we just lost a bunch of residential. So I'm saying, why don't we zone him in by allowing that use, but it's a limited, smaller scale business? Where he's not needing twenty parking places. And it's, and it's the kind of business that's not twenty-four seven, it's not a bar, you know? It's a, a auto repair. He doesn't have customers constantly coming in and out all the time, you know? But we could allow for a small scale. But we could allow for a small-scale commercial in residential.
So all you're doing is putting the definition from multi-use onto residential. So get rid of residential zone and just do all multi-use. Cuz you're just moving that same definition.
We also put a commercial, I mean, we also put a conditional use on, on it, so you can operate a small-scale. Commercial business out of your home. As a conditional use, and so you have to come in and this is again.
It would be vested at what we approve, like you are only allowed five hundred square feet of this shop. That you're doing out back and you cannot expand on that.
That's what I'm proposing, that's one of the proposals I have for Spanish Valley, so that we can, instead of going the other direction and saying. Oh, just because there's this one existing commercial that's non-conforming, to make him non-conforming, let's make everybody else. Multiple use and then we lose all that residential.
I like that.
Um, and so instead. Uh, making that an acceptable use in residential, but it's conditional and it's gotta be smaller.
So you need to think about what does smaller mean, is that a square footage, is that?
Well, based on acreage, based on parking per acre for your small business, like parking lots, I mean, parking spaces. Is one easy way to measure.
I'm, I'm fine to go this route and I actually think it's a good idea, but we need to be very careful of how we define. What is a small-scale business and at what point are you no longer small-scale?
I will go. Um, because I think that would help out Spanish Valley without.
Cuz if we could do that across the board, conditional.
Or, you know, like, I was thinking, let's just put everything back to residential. Forget community commercial and, you know, and not the whole, like.
Talk about Spanish Valley.
I'm talking about Spanish Valley, because if, 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 if we want schools. And we want hospitals and we want all of that, we need long-term residence, we need residential. And the idea of short-term rentals is great, but we've already, we've got a zone that we're building for that, Balanced Rock. Valley Estates, um, Lloyd's Neighborhood, you know, all of that is short-term rental, so the county, we are generating that kind of tourist money. But if we're gonna build, and if the county wants us to incorporate, if we're gonna create a community, we need to keep those rooftops, long-term residences. Is allows short-term rentals all over.
I don't disagree in an ideal world, but, but Spanish va- valley is built out and we are going to have to find a compromise to move forward. If we had a clean slate, it would be wonderful. But we don't.
That's why I really wanna rethink Spanish Valley, cuz I think there are some ways that we can.
Let's do that and if you wanna.
Preserve residential.
See if there's.
I will look at what they have for small business.
Sure, I'm not sure that they've. Read through things.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, rural residential is residential and let me read off the list here. Uh, storing hay, sure, beekeeping, fine, selling baked goods, dairy or food prep, fine, beauty services, fine. Like all of this is. Residential, cottage industry. Um, you know, if you're getting into leather products, that's beyond personal use, you're gonna have some state. Guidelines for like tanning leather and that. So. We can look at it and entertain it, but. Maybe there's some misunderstanding in that. Unless they're running ten thousand beehives. Building permits?
You know. The new pope wouldn't like how. Catholic church is spelled in these buildings.
Roll, no, the old one's rolling over in this grave.
Okay, and some of these, um, the, this electrical, um, you know, that's now within city limits. And so s- some of these we had to call and let them know, hey, you're at the wrong jurisdiction. Um, but there's, they still show up on our list, so. This one, vacation home, I called and clarified with him, that's not an overnight rental, that's his vacation home.
So yeah, I think Tara Drive is another one that we need to talk about in the future meeting.
Yeah, Tara Drive's on hold right now. So, here's our subdivision plaits. Um, we've got three of them ready for signatures. Three of them are under legal, or two of them are under legal. These two are pending amusements and then our new reviews there at the bottom. Uh, plat review teams, because of our time constrictions, we're actually meeting every other week now. And so we do one online and one in person each week. Um, I'm trying to get back to that, I'll be honest, subdivisions have been a little bit on hold while we handled. Crisis, so we're back on schedule with those now.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved that we adjourn.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Shannon, you opposed?